So, welcome everybody and thank you so much to the members of the public that have joined us today. It is really wonderful to see so many people having an investment in our kids. And thank you to board members who are here. I do have a lot to cover, but I want to make it as interactive as possible. This is a workshop, so Board Rules where a public comment is during a certain five-minute window. I'm absolutely open to questions from the peanut gallery if that's all right with our chair. I think we're meant to be transparent. But I will say, just sort of start us all off, a lot of talk has been on learning loss. But I think we should talk a lot about what's been gained. Our students have gone through a global pandemic and we want to focus on acceleration of learning. And so what does that mean? That means we want to keep moving our boat forward and there may be some areas where we want to plug the boat up, where they may be having a need to repair the hole if there are gaps in learning. But that doesn't mean we want to wait and hold on and stay in port. We're going to continue moving our students forward with grade level material. So hopefully by the end of the time, you'll have a little bit of a context about how we measure and reflect and then take action on those reflections to meet student needs. So first, I'm going to give you an initial summary of our performance and the measures that we use to understand student achievement. And this is specifically today in numeracy and literacy in grades K-12. We do a summative assessment in grades three through five. That is in English Language Arts and then in three through five Mathematics. We do have benchmark data that gives us a pulse. We don't have to wait for the state to tell us how we're doing. Our kids every day are setting their own goals and thinking about how they're doing. Our teachers, three times a year, do benchmarks to kind of reflect on where we are. And again, as I say every year, taking your temperature or the blood pressure doesn't make you well. It's the actions that you make a choice to engage in after you receive the advice or the measures from your healthcare provider. In the same way, the data doesn't tell us anything but what the data is. It's our adult actions where we reflect on that and make next steps to respond. So I'll talk a little bit about that today. First of all, our initial summary, just to kind of couch what you're about to see, there's way more than what I could capture in a few bullets. But we did see some promising results in grade three. There are some gains in grade five math at Tuttle and East Haven Academy. So we're wondering about the, our benchmark data supports are moving. We have areas of focus that we've spent a lot of time on are showing growth over time. So phonics and phonemic awareness are showing on our benchmark data that our students are moving from getting ready to read to reading to learn. And we're even at the target level for writing in a lot of areas. So we do have an area of focus for math. We show the pandemic had a larger impact on mathematics instruction. And fourth grade is also an area, because of the age those children were during the first interrupted pandemic year, we really want to focus our efforts and energies on fourth grade. And then performance did vary greatly by learning model. So if at any point you have questions, please let me know. But just so, if you're in the audience and you've received reports or you have received reports in the past, you should be getting them in the mail any day now. The test score is literally just one measure. It's an estimate of the student's achievement. It comes with some measurement error. So we always say on those reports that you get at home, if the kid took this five times, it would be between here and here. And so sometimes those performance levels are like a matter of two points, between the performance level three and the performance level four. But you can see on your family report what you got last year, you know, what your student did this year. We are lacking data from 2019, 2020. We did not know how the students would have performed on a summative assessment in that year. But you get this nifty little check if the kid is reading at standard and a nice little equal sign if they're kind of near the standard. And then you can compare it to your school and district average. So that's what the families will see at home. We also receive data, and I did not have time to report this here in an hour, but I have been really looking at the data on our claim level performance. So when I talk about things like writing or number and operations, it's because I'm looking at where did this particular student need some support? But I'm looking as a district. Where do we as a curriculum need to shore up some areas? And so those claim level things like writing and research and inquiry, that's an area where we are focusing our attention on because those targets are something that, it's indicative of our next step. And so same with math concepts and procedures, problem solving and communicating reasoning. Again, when I talk about those claims, it's what our kids need to do. They can read informational and literary text. They can write and produce evidence to say, I make a point. All the things we want are grown, it's not a test that we care about. It's kids being grown-up adults that can communicate effectively. So it's really, a lot of people talk about, don't teach to the test, but teaching to writing a really articulate piece of writing, teaching to being able to critically read an article and decide if that health advice is worth your time or not. Those are skills that go along with what the test is measuring. And again, mathematics, explaining and applying those concepts, problem solving, communicating, and then making models and analyzing that data. So I'm going to give you a summary. I will go as fast or as slow.
One question. For instance, I know each student's questions vary, right? So if they get a passage, don't they change as a student read? You don't know exactly what story we're getting?
So the Smarter Balanced Assessment, there are a number of items in the item bank, but they should all receive the same measures in terms of a standardized measure. The iReady Benchmark is a computer adaptive test. So as the student gets, like, it will give you harder problems.
So every student in the state will get like the same passage to pick the main concept?
I wouldn't speak on the record to say I know for certain that that's the case, but I know that the targets are measured in the same way. And those item banks, which I've been a part of writing those items, they're very, they're,
Catered to each grade level.
They're catered to each grade level and the passages. So I will check on that. I will check on that.
There's controversy on children being familiar with certain topics that might be presented in those.
Yeah, so that was one of the reasons why the Smarter Balance actually does it the way that it does it. Because in the past, our Connecticut Mastery Test had a lot of like, if you were, for example, in the state of Vermont and it was a passage about a maple tree, they relied so much on connections and connecting to your past experiences. They made the changes to the Smarter Balance to ensure that everything the kid needed to know was exactly explicitly in the text. So those, as with anything, students with higher levels of background knowledge do perform and have a better word understanding and vocabulary. But the Smarter Balance, actually, one of the reasons for the change of that assessment from the Connecticut Mastery Test was to take away that barrier for kids who maybe lacked background knowledge. If you can read, it's there for you to look at. Yep, that's a good question. All right, so this is the trend data. And so again, this does go up to middle school. But you can see, especially in almost all grades except grade eight and a little bit of less of a dip in grade seven, students significantly, like, there's a dip, right? So we want to see, that's our new baseline. So we will want to see for next couple of years, that trend go up. So this is the trend data of all of the years. It's not necessarily the same students. It's the trend. So it could be a group of third graders. You know, they're different kids each year. So I'll show you next the rough cohort data. So again, I mean rough because in East Haven, we haven't always had the same exact children. Say that again. So this is math. And again, it's indicative of our curricular work. We saw some movement when we did a lot of curriculum revision in the middle. And we can see it moving, hopefully in the right direction. You know, this is when we started to do some work with math and Ready Gen and Envision. But we're really trying to now see that new baseline and see that work continue. This is a rough cohort. So it's like approximately the same group of kids. The brown line is the class of 2024 and the orange line is the class of 2025. So the good thing about this is it's going this way, right? We want it to moving up. What I, and again, I would like to see that next bar go into the green and remain there. So that's what we would want to see for our next level of work. So ELA, again, the trend is upward. It's right on the cusp of that green benchmark line. Green means performance level three or four, which is at or exceeded the standard. That's green and blue.
What are those grades? I can't read them.
Say it again.
One, two, three, four.
So performance level one is below the standard. Performance level two, the yellow, is approaching standard.
No, no, I get that, but is this what grade level?
This is the class of 2024.
Oh, okay.
So they're actually sort of, both lines are the same. So it's class of 2024 and 2025. It's only groups of kids we have data for over time.
Okay, so what is the span?
So this, when they started in grade three, they would have last year been in grade seven. It's the same roughly cohort of children. And then in grade six, they would have started in grade three and last year would have been in grade six. So that's who we're talking about when we look at this data. You know, and the other good thing is like, we didn't see like a crazy dip for the pandemic either. Like, they're still moving in that upward trend. And this is, again, this is math. So we see that that's something that, again, we'll continue to work on. And that's an area that, so are there any questions about the cohort or the trend data at this point before I move on to like the nitty-gritty stuff?
I'm just looking at that. And I always tend to overthink this. So the fact that you have more blue and less green, does that mean more?
So those are just, so this is the score, a good question. This is the score range. So in the state of Connecticut, if you score a vertical scale score of 2,200 to 2,400, if your child's score on ELA is this much, it's a red, it's a performance level one.
I know that. And the gold is a red too.
The gold, it's not, this is a score range. It's a very short range of scores of kids that can be, you know, within this yellow. So it's not a lot of kids that we have yellow. It's, this is the children that we have. That's their average vertical scale score and their cohort. And so this is, you know, there's a higher level of a range that you can score in blue, but the trend data goes that way. So these, the bigger the red, doesn't mean more kids are in the red?
That's what I'm trying to say.
No, it just means that's the, more scores would equal red than, yeah. That's a good question.
That's like if you're doing a traditional grade guideline, anything below 55 is an A.
Right, there's like way more chances to get one, two, three, four, five, 55 than, but that, but, you know, so we have, we have that. So again, I do have some slides here about what the ELA test does. Is that something you want me to revisit or do you want me to, you know, is that helpful just to kind of talk about that? I won't spend too much time on it, but reading and understanding complex texts on grade level. Using evidence from source materials to support their ideas. So honestly, it is a social studies and science test, really, because a lot of the content requires them to draw from academic vocabulary and think about, you know, their knowledge. But it does have everything that they need within the text. But if a student has some background knowledge in those core concepts in that grade level as part of the curriculum, it does benefit them. And so again, main idea, summarizing and analyzing. And so we measure reading, writing, listening, and research and inquiry, helping them integrate lots of ideas from different places. And as you go up in the grades, there's the more places you have to integrate from. So a grade three student might have to do like one or two articles. Grade five student might have like more to pull together. And again, just so you know, the achievement levels are, level one is does not meet the achievement standard. Level two is approaching. Level three is meeting and then level four is exceeding. Just a quick note on redacting data. This comes up every year and I'm not, I really don't want to hide anything. The data is the data and we will not get any better if we are trying to hide where we are. I know where we are. Our teachers are talking about where we are. We sit down in grade level meetings and really drill down on this. But by state of Connecticut law, anything that can lead to be personally identifiable, I can't like publish on the website or anything. So we're in a small forum, but this particular presentation will not be like printed and put on the website. There will be a redacted version that will have some asterisks. And even in here, there are some asterisks. But I will be able to show you, I have a confidential copy of the actual raw data that I can share with you. Again, it's because if the numbers are so small, that if you know a group of fourth graders at the academy, you could figure out who those kids are, it's not, it's personally identifiable.
It doesn't matter anyway. I mean, it matters, it all matters.
Yeah.
These are test results of a group of children that we're all responsible for. Everyone must be tested.
So for the Smarter Balance, we had fewer groups of students who met that criteria. So it's any group that's lower than 20 students. So you can see in grade three, it's roughly a third, right? Students who've met or not met or are approaching or met or exceeded. So if you look at the blue, this blue bar is grade three. So if you follow that along, that's how our grades three students, they're sort of roughly in each of those three performance levels. Grade four, we have the highest number of students who have not yet met that benchmark. And again, that age group, that critical area where they were in second grade with a global pandemic interruption and third grade, will be putting additional resources into shoring up the phonics foundational skills, resources in that area to help with those reading skills. But we do see some positive growth in fifth grade. And so we see about 45.77%. That's close to pre-pandemic levels for, you know, not quite there, but it's closer. So we're trying to get more, 80 to 100% of our students meeting or exceeding goal. That's my goal. And then you can also see the learning model, how that made a difference. So in grades three through five, students who were fully in person are blue and students who are hybrid. So that doesn't mean we did not have a hybrid model, so this gets confusing. But students whose families chose to have them out remotely for a greater than a quarter to three-quarters of the year, like 25 to 75% of the days of the school year, they were in a remote category. So maybe they were back and forth. Those are the hybrid, that's what we mean by hybrid. And then remote was 75% of or more of the days of the school year they were attending remotely. And so you see, that's the gray. So you see the highest number of students that are not met were those that were remote attendance. But we also see, you know, and so there's some questions. We don't know the answers just from the data, but some have raised a question about families who were able to have a parent home to watch their children and do remote may have had some resources or extra support. Like, so we don't know, you know, the, you know, so there's some consistency in approaching. But at the brackets, at the ends, it's something that we're looking at to find out more.
Are there a lot of outlier scores? Like, you know what I'm saying?
What do you mean? You know, your kids who aren't?
No, outlier scores are just numbers that are somewhat not consistent with the majority.
With the remote learners?
Yeah, like extremely high, extremely low, you know, outliers.
No, but I think if you looked at the population, it would be a good question to look at the population of remote learners that did well.
Yeah.
In terms of other identifiers or things. What was their pattern typically? What was their experience at home? Who was there to support them? Really?
Isn't it? Is it the hybrid or is it the worst?
So, and again, the data doesn't tell us why, but we do know that in a self-contained elementary classroom, in a self-contained elementary classroom, they did retain really good relationships with their teacher. You had one teacher for 25, 20 kids, 27 kids, whatever it was. Versus in the middle school, you might have had seven or six people to sort of navigate and figure out their Google Classroom. So I would imagine it's fair to say, my mom had on, it was probably easier to be a remote learner or hybrid learner when you're not navigating multiple teachers, different ways of doing their classrooms and grading and stuff. But the data doesn't tell me that's the truth. I wonder, that's a.
But we have fidelity, more fidelity than we've ever had.
Right, right.
If in school.
Right, right. And so I think, and we did, you know, a number of things with foundations. We had a lot of resources at the three, five level in all of our ELA classrooms. We had video instruction that was pretty consistent with what they received in school. So that was a good thing. There are, this is the number of students in learning model. So these are redacted, but I did highlight, even though the number's redacted, I can tell you like that's an area where we either met or exceeded our last year, our 2018, 2019 score. So, and again, you see grade three, there's a decline in the total overall baseline from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. But we have some promising numbers in terms of, you know, moving forward. So.
See, I don't know. Let me just pick this up for a minute, okay? The numbers. So this is not the same cohort.
No, they're not the same kids. So those kids in 2018, 19 would have taken this assessment in fifth grade. Those are your fifth graders. It's not the same, it's just the grade. Same teacher, maybe not, depending on if they were moving.
Because there's no 19, 20.
Right.
And the blue line is the average?
The blue line is East Haven's performance as a whole district.
Yeah, but there's no way to tell progress by that. You're just seeing the average scores. It's different kids, yeah.
Right. And I would say comparatively, I did do some looking. Now, the state did put guidance out, don't look at everybody else. Of course, I looked at everybody else.
They did, everybody does.
And I, you know, the amount of grades and areas where we held steady, like we didn't have a 10-point lot, we did have some. But we did have some promising areas where kind of staying the course. We have not necessarily seen the level of loss. And again, I hate calling it loss because it's not. Those kids gained so much. They gained perseverance, they gained perspective. Maybe they gained some coping strategies for a lot of difficult. Resilience. Our kids are gaining a lot. Unfortunately, I would have preferred to bag the pandemic, but, you know, so it's just, it's where we are today that can help us move forward. And I'll show you a little bit more about that. But you can see, I mean, we had some significant growth at EHA and Tuttle and Language Arts. So this shows we've put a lot of effort into the curriculum. We have the public site up. People can see that there's an integration with social studies, science, writing, reading. That seems, and third, fifth graders have had the most time with that model. And so I wonder if that has made a difference and those teachers have been able to sort of find. And even Ferrara, you see some, you know, they're similar. Mawgwin was interrupted quite a few times with different quarantines, especially. So, you know, they keep saying, the state says, don't compare like kids over time or yourself to other districts because of that.
You can't help but do that. I do understand that. Because people are going to, oh, look at, we're still not, we're trending in, you know, below the 50%, you know? And that's what gets everybody, which is understandable, but. I mean, we have to always put it in perspective. They're not the same kids that we're looking at at these numbers. So it's not to say, boy, look, the kid's scores dropped. This is a whole different set of kids. Who started at a different baseline, ended at a different, you know, end point. Well, and you could, well, you could look at the same group though, which is what you're trying.
We have some rough cohort data, yeah. But we, they did not release the site. So usually if you look on the public, there's a public website called EdSitePublic. And you can see all of our scores back to 2014. They're not releasing this year's data on that site because it's just not accurate. And if someone very smart in psychometrics or whatever realizes that's bad data, you can't compare that with that. So because every district was different, how many quarantines they had, how many, you know? So we are just using this to, and the best thing about this data and some of our benchmark data is whatever it says, we can see by domain what curricular areas we need to shore up. We can see the stuff we focused on in the past is starting to get, spreading to congeal. And we can see, oh wow, we really need to pick up ourselves by the bootstraps and focus on this with kids. And those are some things that are helping. And again, so this grade three is not present. It was one of those areas that was redacted. So I did not put that in the data here. But you can see grade four and grade five have a larger, this is all students, regardless of learning model. So when you combine everybody. So there's more students meeting or exceeding at Tuttle School than met.
The blue?
Tuttle is, this is all Tuttle. So blue is fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Green is fifth. Here's Mawgwin. And so in most cases, except for fourth grade, which is an area of focus for us, again, across the district, there's roughly a third, a third and a third in the other grade levels.
What's going on in third to fourth grade? That, you know, you can't account for this, but.
So it's third to fourth grade?
Well.
This is last year's data for last year's third graders and last year's fourth graders.
Oh, okay. So they were the most impacted?
We believe, you know, and some of the studies say that summer slide kind of studies, they projected what the COVID slide would be. Those kids who are learning crucial foundational reading skills in second grade, when you're like finishing up your learning to reading, learning to read so you can read to learn and phonics and stuff, that gap is important. So we've done actually some really exciting work and planning around that, enhancing word study and foundational skills in the upper grades for those kids. And we can.
Those two grades, they're starting to get more and more dependent skills. So it's hard.
Yeah.
Right, and once you learn those skills, now it's comprehension that becomes the big picture. It's, you know.
And so the programming that we're putting in place, sometimes those foundational skills is babyish stuff. So our iReady platform has lessons that are more appropriate for older kids with those foundational things. That is not, it honors the age of the child and doesn't feel boring. And so, and again, I'll talk a little about iReady, but it is not just the test that we give. It's not a new curriculum. It's a supplement to like provide interventions or lessons or extra help and support or small group instruction. So there's lesson materials, there's personalized learning materials that kids can play with, and there's learning games that kids can, they actually do like rewards on Fridays. I'm going to turn on learning games and you can play if you guys have done so well. You know, so those are things that kids seem to gravitate to. But doesn't replace ever skilled teachers' instruction. And again, Smarter, Ferrara is an area not met. We have about fourth grade as an area of focus.
So it seems to be fourth grade throughout the district?
And that seems fairly consistent with my colleagues I've spoken to.
Is this the current fourth grade?
This is last year's fourth graders that are now in fourth.
So they would have first benefactor in second grade?
That's right.
Yeah, okay, yeah. They, right at the, right at the end of sixth, think about it. At the end of second grade, they were booted out, allowed back in, and there was all that.
Yeah. So then fifth graders, this green group of kids would now be in sixth. This is reporting on last year's kids, all right?
Okay.
So again, this is Smarter Balanced at the East Haven Academy, Language Arts. Fourth is blue, fifth is green. But we do not see a couple of factors at the academy. There are very few school moves. We do not, you know, we don't get new enrollments at the academy. They tend to be a consistent group of kids who have a routine where they attend from first through eighth grade. And so, you know, that's a more, you know, the class sizes remain the same. So there are some factors there.
With a very much enforced fidelity of curriculum?
So they're using our curriculum across the district is really, it's all this, it's all, I don't mean to say the same because teachers do have autonomy, but our academy teachers were on the curriculum writing teams. They adopted Ready Gen. They supported the creation of social studies units. It's just a matter of, you know, I don't have the answers of why there may be more fidelity to. more fidelity to curriculum or whether there isn't. I don't have that data in front of me, whether they do or not. But we do know that like we've had 11 new kids register, you know, on a monthly basis in different, moving and coming and, you know.
That's another, there's 11 students we know won't end up in the academy. Those 11 students will be in other schools.
Right.
Yeah, and there's no way to know what level they come in at, but yet we're testing them. And their, their progress is being counted in our test scores. And for all we know, they didn't go to school for the last two years.
Right. And so what we're trying to do, because what we have looked at is of the students who are performing in their domains, we can look at, we have, our performance matter system has factors of mobility. So we can look at total school moves, we can look at attendance, because sometimes it's not a reading issue. It might be an attendance issue, or it might be, you know, this gives us ways, because in the past, we had to look at the data platform for reading and then go into the attendance platform. This, this extra platform has like, I can layer it all next to each other and kind of see and say, is this different? What was this kid's score like? You know, or we even have a flag that says, is they rushed?
Oh, yeah.
Like it'll say that the kid is rushing the test, so we can say we need to.
Do you allow them, we, I have, I tell the kids, have to take what they can, because they don't like it. They don't like if the flag comes up.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't believe we're allowed to readminister the test from our initial training for the diagnostic anyway, but we do have our teachers really focus on making sure that they're monitoring and helping students make their best choices.
I think you can.
Yeah.
Cause if you, if you do, all you're doing is giving them a chance to succeed. They're not going home to study. You're just saying, look, this, this indicates you rushed. Try it again.
Okay.
Under supervision.
Yeah.
Let them finish it. And then lo and behold, they'll go, they don't like it.
Yeah.
They don't like those scores. They.
Sure.
This is the first year I've seen iReady as sixth graders take more interest in it.
Yeah.
And take more time with it. And just so you, in the beginning, like our eighth graders, oh my God, give me iReady, I don't want it. But no, you've had it. Now you know.
Yeah.
But they know the game and they know they can, they know they can blow it. But they also, you, you need to let them take it again.
Yeah.
It's not gonna hurt anybody. It's only gonna help them.
And I think when you start the conversation, like I have three children myself, some of, you may know this, it's not about the test. It's like, I don't, the, my shoe size is my shoe size. That just helps me feel comfortable when I walk, right? So when we learn to read and then we understand, like if I go to a coach, my soccer coach, and he's like, great, great job of everything, then I don't have the next step to grow. So he would assess, or she would assess my kicking, my skills. So we want our kids to begin to think about their own lives as readers and not just have it be like told to them, you're good at this, you're not good at, because kids tell the story then about themselves as school students. We want them to have a growth mindset to say, well, I was really struggling with fluency, but I practiced really hard. They read a book in third grade about Michael Jordan, who didn't make his varsity basketball team, but he practiced really hard. And so they talk about, it's not, you're not like good at this or not good at this, it's the practice that you can put in. And so we're trying to shift that mindset, even with parents, because a lot of the things that kids can work on, you know, is something that when you talk about, so what was really hard for you today? How did you do? Oh, wow, did, what did you do to get through that tough thing? You know, and helping them remember that the test is just a snapshot in time. So again, in the mathematics assessments, I'll just go over that. We want them to use math to solve problems, complete their problems accurately with sort of fluency, so it's not take forever. And then, and not take too long, they can take their time, but not take too long that they like forget the concepts, they can kind of synthesize everything. Understanding how patterns and concepts link together, applying their knowledge to real world problems and connecting reasoning. So we have some areas of skills that we need mastered. And then we think about this when we're talking about curriculum. Concepts and procedures, problem solving, communicating reasoning, and modeling and data analysis. And so this would be our performance as a district. So I see third grade had like the highest number of students performing that met or exceeded the standard. So it was a little bit of the opposite from fifth and English language arts. So we're looking at math as an area of focus for improvement, because again, it was roughly, roughly that. So I, and, and this was our levels three and four. So our students, again, pretty much performed around that district baseline, was pretty consistent across the district. We did see fourth grade at Ferrara and Mamawin having areas of focus for improvement. Grade five Tuttle was within five points of their pre pandemic. And Mamawin, again, was similar.
Just growth for Tuttle.
Yeah, yeah. They've done.
A little bit of problem.
Yep, they've done some work. So again, this is Tuttle math. So you can see, blue is the third grade, navy is the fourth grade, and green is the fifth. Mamawin, green is light blue, navy is fourth, green is fifth. And so we see third grade at Ferrara, you know, there was some growth made there. So we think third graders are the first group of third graders to have like two years, even though they were interrupted with our new math curriculum, where we're really focusing on a lot of those components of communicating, thinking through problems, and bringing it all together.
Has it been a full two years yet with the new curriculum or no?
So our year one of official implementation was 2019, 20. We had a pilot the year before and like in pre-learning.
Yeah.
The second year was our, so it's like ish.
So we really need three years of consistent.
You really, we really do. But it's, but those fifth grade, the third grade teachers have been, you know, those kids, that early, early stages of numeracy skills, that's so important. Those K1, two students are, I think benefited from that.
Yeah, I think you're gonna see a big difference with the scores in about two years.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt.
Absolutely. And so again, this is more third and third and third, or give or take some, but we see more students in the approaching, which is, as you can see, there's such a short band between the approaching and the, so we can push those groups of students forward. And then we always like to check on, in terms of our students by subgroup, are we equitably teaching all of our learners regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of their ethnicity? And so we do look at those measures as well. And so you can see that our students, we've exceeded the levels of three and four for students who identify, self-identify as black or African-American, Hispanic and Latino. Some declines among English learners, special needs, some increases in high need students. So high need students are students who have socioeconomic needs. And then our white students showed some percentage points of growth. And this is math. So it's of some growth there, but not necessarily where we want to be, but we want to see not a huge gap between any subgroup. So if there's no questions about the, I'll wait, and is there questions about the smarter balance? What are you scratching your head about? What are you wondering about? I've got about 15 minutes left. I could do a few minutes of smarter balance, or I can do the district beginning of your benchmark and talk about that. What's, you came here tonight, maybe because the board meetings got a really exciting agenda, but hopefully maybe you won't have some questions. Are there any questions? I love the informal more workshop approach, so we can take some questions. Go ahead.
So I was looking at the schools and noticing certain schools that did drop. What's the percentage that in that last year where it dropped was, if you look at percentages of how many were actual, like learning from home fully or mostly remotely compared to in-person?
Yeah, and, and I can't share that, that's kind of among those, but this, I can assure you, the schools themselves are looking at that. We're looking at that because of, not to say, oh, well, here's why, and so don't worry about it, but because if a child had an interrupted year, because.
I know Mamawin definitely had interrupted the curriculum, but I didn't know, besides that, how many were actual.
Yeah. Across the district.
60% of them were from, from remotely.
Yeah. Elementarys, we, we actually had a majority of our students by the end of the year were in-person learners. At the maximum, I think 33% of elementary students, maybe 25 was kind of the norm. So we did not have a large percentage of students that identified as fully remote. That said, we did have a number of students who.
Quarantined.
Were quarantined. So that is a different, you know.
Due to that, they made the hybrid status.
They made the hybrid status.
So they might have made the hybrid status. So what, what we want to do with that is regardless of why you missed a day of school.
Well, these kids weren't hybrid. We did not have a hybrid.
We did not have a hybrid model, but the state listed them in their reporting as hybrid because they had.
The whole state then to say, you can't count it your way, you counted this our way, the state way, only because there's a certain amount of kids that weren't here, right?
That's not on like video or anything, that I just spilled all over myself, right? All right. So yeah, so that's a really good question. But what we want to know is like, I don't want to make excuses about why maybe a particular kid needed help, but now we have that data and we can say, we think this is one of the reasons why you have a gap in this area. And so now we're continually moving forward, we're sailing the ship, but we're also plugging the holes by using some of these other tools and, and supports. So you may have heard about win time. So for win time, our students are still doing a 90-minute literacy block and a 40 to 45-minute content area block with writing embedded. So they're getting a full, they're not missing instruction, not being pulled out of instruction to go like fix something that is broken, because they're not broken. They're wonderful, beautiful kids, gained as well as, you know, needing some gaps. So that win time is what I need. So they can be designed, so if you look at our platform, our teachers have, can see their class, and they can see how students performed in math, and they can see like, in, I was looking at teacher's class today, I have 11 kids that have a similar profile of the group, of the work that would challenge them. And so I can, then they have some small group planning tools, I can plan a small group right around that need, that they're working on number and operations. And I have these lesson plans that go in order of like, if I don't do this first, I'm never gonna learn the next thing, and the next thing, and the next thing. And they're doing that concurrently, so they're not missing the new stuff. And so we really shore up. So it's been very helpful, our teachers have reported that, you know, it's a lot, but there's so much there that they maybe didn't have before. So we're not, you know, looking online or trying to pull a book out, and it's all kind of targeted to the kids, what they took for their assessment. So, you know, and I'll talk quickly about that. So the key indicators that we assess in elementary school, we have them bucketed. They're learning to read, which is like your letter sounds, your decoding, can I break a word apart? Can I read a big, long word? And like accuracy. So if you read, if you ever heard someone read aloud and they're talk like Ben Stein from Ferris Bueller, like that's not what we want, right? We want the student to be, the other day I saw a bear. You know, you want to hear them, they can understand meaning. That helps you understand what you're reading, when you do that, whether it's in your head or out loud. But we have to move on from there, right? We have to then help them be finding key details, doing central ideas and a message of a story. What are the meanings of words? They may differ from word to word. Finding evidence to prove their point. And these are all measured in our, both our curriculum and smarter balance, and frankly, if you ever go to a party and talk to an adult for 10 minutes, right? All of these things, you want to find out if people can do that. And so we're, we're talking about that in terms of our assessments and curriculum-based measures. So in numerous, in ELA, or numeracy rather, it's the same. There's these foundational skills, kind of can I see numbers? Do I understand what a five means? Do I know the fiveness of five? It's got a value. Can I recognize patterns? And can I kind of accurately compute so that I'm not bogged down and it takes me so long that I forget what the problem was even about? Right? It's not about speed. When we were growing up, a lot of us did like fax tests. Those are not necessarily bad, but anxiety does not help anybody learn math. So making sure kids understand that the fluency is about helping you understand so that you're working at a pace that's not a frustrational pace and not necessarily having every kid need to be speedy Gonzales. Does that make sense? And so then beyond, once those are mastered, then students are getting math practices, understanding number and operations, algebraic thinking, communicating with reasoning and evidence, measurement and data, geometry, problem solving and applications. So those are parts of our curricula, we're making sure in our curriculum, is there a place where we're like learning how they do all that stuff? So we measure that in, in two, three ways. In grades K through five, we, K through three rather, we focus on the gray, because you can't really read to learn unless you're learning to read. We really want to make sure those letter sounds, decoding, fluency, and accuracy are really strong. So we use an assessment called the DIBBLES eight. It's a very silly word, but it stands for dynamic indicators of basic early literacy. So they have those early skills. And so we want to make sure that, and I want you to pay really only attention to the green, because that's the same group of kids. The blue and the green are not the same kids. It's last year's kids, the end of the year. And then this year's kids at the beginning of this year, different kids, right? So our first, our kindergartners come in with about 20%, but we want by the end of the year to get to 75 or 80% of those kids meeting those skills. So we have three times a year where they do this DIBBLES benchmark. And we are seeing by third grade, all of those indicators of basic early literacy, we get closer to the higher, you know, areas, which was what we want. And any kid who flags as needing intervention, we would then provide it for them. Then as they get older in grades four and five, we have adopted this year an iReady assessment. So this gives us data by domain. And so the domains of reading are phonological awareness. And the good news is we've been spending a lot of our time, all of our kids, the shaded green means above grade level. So all, that's across the district. That doesn't mean there's not some grade levels where it's not that, but in the earlier grades, their target of where you're supposed to be at kindergarten, you know, so they're all kind of where they need to be. So our phonics and phonological awareness shows that those, that effort we put in is important, but it does show that we need some work to improve vocabulary comprehension in literature and text.
And what grade are you talking?
This is all school, all three, five, here.
All three, five.
Yep, so I'll show you by school and by domain after. This is district grade four literacy. So we have, the red with the shade is the kids who are three or more grade levels below. The red is two grade levels below, but you can see there's a larger portion of our kids that are within one grade level of, of, you know, being on the standard. So we are, and then we then get their exact needs and we can target them because that assessment gives us understanding of like kind of how they tick as readers. So then we have, does anybody have any questions about this or the other slide before I move on to the next one? I'm good on time, actually.
I, you're gonna have more in fifth grade.
More what?
Need, right?
Well, we have fewer kids that are more significantly behind, but we do have more students who are in that red and target, yes.
Okay, so maybe I don't see the indicators there.
So this group, this, there's like a shaded bar of red. Their three or more grade levels below, so it's 14% of fifth graders.
All red, okay.
But this group, it's still not, we don't want them there. But, you know, we see something that was interesting when we looked at it by, you know, by grade, and you could see that kindergarten in some of the areas, we really don't start to see them getting, I didn't share that data because it was selected whether kindergarten, first, second, and third did this assessment. They could have chosen not to, because it was not on our assessment calendar. Some teachers found it very helpful. But we didn't start to see kids really get into the red until later grades, which means those school moves, those interrupted learnings would make, take longer, would have a significant impact on like gaps. And so again, here's analysis by domain. Number and operations and measurement and data are our stronger domains. Geometry is really an area that we were going to want to focus on in our curriculum. And then again, this is the beginning of your data. This is a brand new assessment, they've never taken this assessment before. This is our baseline. So our goal is if we have this data, it will help us, just like I said, the blood pressure tells me to eat Cheerios and, you know, take my statins or whatever you're supposed to do. You're healthcare people, I'm not. But you're, you're with me, right? It's not the data that tells us what to do, it's the decisions that we make. And we have levels of data for each kid and for groups of kids that really help us. This is by school. And this is by grade level.
Yeah, you need the grade level. Whole school is what, though? If you give them a brand-new test, a fifth grader, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just giving you a very bird's eye view of the whole piece. But like you can see, nobody in kindergarten, there's, they're sort of all within one grade level of the expectation. And as you go to grade one and two, you don't really start to see significantly below grade level until grade three. And so we're going to look at those areas, upper grades, three, four and five, and really make sure that those kids.
You've got to figure out the domain.
Yeah, we have, again, at a, in an hour, at each grade level, each domain, our teachers, what they're doing is they're taking those by grade level and then by class. They have instructional groupings by domain. So you can actually see your class and see which, yeah.
We use this all the time. So I'm just looking at like grade three, it makes sense. It depends on what the domain is. So if their overall level comes out one level below, you could be, you could be grade four, you could be above in a domain. You could still end up in overall grade three, could be by a couple of points, but is it vocabulary? Is it reading comprehension? Is it informational learning?
This is math here. But yes, so this would be their composite like overall performance. And then what we, the domains tell us is what the kids need to work on next.
And that would be on individual level?
It's both on an individual level and a classroom level. So if I find out my whole, like I can do as a curriculum level, geometries, we're going to have to put some more work into that. As we see, you know, or we'll look especially at mid-year, we're going to see.
You might have not have taught that particular skill yet. A lot of these things, it depends if they match up with, with your math progress.
So, and I'll just to clarify, this is a, this is a diagnostic assessment that measures the standards. So they would be measured at each grade level at the standards on that grade level. So if you are entering into second grade, you should, it would be expected you'd be assessed on grade level one standards. And so when you're supposed to be meeting benchmark in second grade on a grade level one geometry. It's not like everybody's knowing geometry that you're getting in sophomore year. But what are shapes are, what's a circle, maybe a simple, you know? So those standards are very specific to each grade level. But our teachers then can go in and assign work and support and print out lessons that they can deliver with their group to really hit on those areas that our students are demonstrating. And they can see their whole class really has one domain. They can, that be their daily problem of the day that they practice or something like that. So those are the next steps. I mean, one of the things that we do is that we constantly are looking at this data by school level. We'll meet in database teams to analyze and support interventions. We'll continue to discuss instructional grouping and lesson planning. And then we will continue to look at the domains as the students move through the year to improve our curriculum. Because if we're seeing patterns and a lot of kids are missing the same thing, we need to fix that. So that's where, that's where we're at. And I want to thank our teachers who really did a big lift administering a new assessment, reviewing the Smarter Balance data to think about it in terms of the new information that they're getting from the beginning of the year. And our parents who made sure their kids showed up. They had a breakfast and a drink and a water bottle and, you know, and had some Z's the night before. So it's really all of us together making sure that we're sending the message that a test is just a checkup of where we are today so that we can set our goals for tomorrow. And it's, it really takes all of our support to be proactive, but really understand that the goal is not, you know, to point fingers at why it's bad, but to figure out how to make it better. And how the kids identify also and be part of that process to say, this is what I'm working on today, myself.
And if you take your data from Eye Ready and share it with the students in a way that they can understand it and have them develop goals. I'm talking even to their grade, you know, what can I do? You know, were you red slack? Where, where did you, because it's vocabulary, a lot of times it's vocabulary. Because they're getting, I don't know about here, but in many places they get less science or less social studies. They're meeting like every other day. Or there, there's a lot of that going around.
We're really trying here to make there be a designated block of science and social studies and incorporate real-world math problems in those areas and interdisciplinary connections, even in art.
Because that's where it is.
So that's where it is. So that will be on the public site and in the K-5 Family Partnership Learning Guides. I probably like a less mouthful of a name to call those, so I'll figure out. Maybe Julie can come up with some ideas or if anybody in the peanut gallery has any suggestions. But it'll give you a sense of what your kids are learning all year. And you can kind of see, if your kid did poorly in geometry, you can go back and look at what did she learn in geometry last year? It's in our public site for Atlas. And so I did tell Michelle I was going to share that with the public and I'm happy to do that if that's helpful.
Yeah, during the stuff.
Yep, during the, during the board meeting.
And Jen, I was just wondering, as a diagnostic tool, have you looked at the data using a plot analysis just to check?
Like a scatter plot?
Yeah.
Of where they are? I have the capacity to do that. Like I have to download the raw data.
Yeah. I think that might be really helpful to see.
Yeah, yeah. I have not yet.
I think you might find that really.
Yep. It's really, there's so much we can do with it. But really the, it's more about for the kids, what am I working on to be a good communicator? To help me problem solve, to help my mom or dad like try to plan the deck renovation or the bathroom painting purchase or, you know, helping kids see that math and, and reading as a part of their everyday world. Does anyone else have any other questions? Because we are at seven o'clock and I am doing alright on time.
Yeah, you're doing good. You're doing good.
Two minutes.
Alright. Thank you for your time.
At the end of this evening's meeting, we will begin with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melissa, can you do a roque for attendance, please?
Yes. Tia DePalma?
Yes, here.
Jennifer DeLongo?
Here.
Lisa Geraci Anastasio? Tom Hennessy? Tom Murtaugh? Erica Santiago?
Here.
Jack Stacy?
Here.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Here. Okay, for my chairman of the board report, I do not have much here. However, I do want to give a reminder that there is a workshop for the new legislation that has passed that will affect our policy on Thursday at noon, from 12 to 1:00. I registered. I encourage anyone who would like to register to let Melissa know and she will be sure to do that. Also, we have been, and everyone on the board is invited to attend the East Haven Academy's National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony on Friday, October 22nd at 9:00 a.m. at JMMs auditorium. So if you are able to attend, if you can reach out to Mrs. DiMaggio and contact info is on the flyer.
Where was that? Did we get?
9:00 a.m.
It's at 9:00 a.m.
No, where did, where did that information come from? That's it.
That invitation.
This is it.
The invitation.
Alright, give me the times and dates again, please.
I can, I can get to it probably more.
Thank you.
JMMs? At the, so she, no, but usually, you know, we do get invitations on. It would be helpful.
I'm just saying, I can just scan an email.
Yeah, I mean, I was just here. There, there we go.
9:00 a.m. Wednesday, what's the date again?
9:00 a.m. on Friday the 22nd, JMMs auditorium. Okay. You're all invited. Alright, so at this time I'll ask if we have any correspondence, which I do not believe we do. We do not. Okay, so I'm going to ask for subcommittee reports.
Yes, athletics. And, alright, middle school volleyball, we reported on it last time. It's just taken off. It's a great program. It's continuing to do well. The athletic director, the coaches, myself and all those involved want to thank the JMMs PTC for providing t-shirts for the team and that was greatly appreciated.
The what? T-shirts? Oh.
You got it?
Who provided the t-shirts? I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
The middle school PTC.
Oh, PTC, thank you.
JMMs PTC.
Sorry.
Love all these letters. Alright, the athletic department is now working with the tech department to try and streamline all permission forms. So this is going to allow people to apply, get their permission forms in through Power School. This will be for both the middle school and for the high school. Hopefully they get more people onto Power School. It should help everyone to get those permission slips done and in and on time. And finally, the girls' swim team defeated Branford today. Anytime you beat Branford. Just, just a quick story for everybody here. When my daughter was being recruited to colleges, if any college, their colors were red and white, she immediately threw the letter away. She said, "I can never wear red and white. I have blue and gold." That's it for it.
Okay, and on that note, you just reminded me, because of Mr. Verderam, that on Thursday also at 3:00 p.m. there is a student health and wellness advisory committee that everyone is welcome to attend if they'd like.
Thank you.
Tia?
I don't have anything.
Well, for policy, I think we've solidified a meeting in collaboration with Jack, which he's forgotten his update, so I'll give it to you. Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome. I wanted to.
I believe we chose the 28th correct. And we will be collaborating with Mr. Tenazzo for the sports and fundraising. And we will be getting that all together with RJ.
And that's a.
I'll be there.
Okay.
That's a meeting?
That's going to be a subcommittee meeting. That's going to be a co-subcommittee meeting for athletics, policy, collaboration.
Yeah, I thought the 28th, right before a regular meeting would be.
I think that's completely fine. And.
26.
The 26th. I keep thinking today's the 14th.
My email said the 28th.
I know. That's because all day I thought today was the 14th.
Alright, so the 26th, Jack?
26.
Wait a minute.
Before our next meeting.
I forgot one thing. I hope you all noticed the new fences that are up along the baseball field. Looks really good and provides security.
You should know that the subcommittee meeting can be anytime during the day, during the evening, whenever.
Nope, before our next meeting is fine.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Just with work, yes, sorry.
Okay, sounds good.
And community outreach, I do not believe, my question was actually answered prior to the meeting. There was a question about haze and the work that was being done. I think Michelle reached out to you and got an answer. Were you on that email thread with?
About the what?
About the tiles and something with haze.
It was not what I, I'm aware of going on.
Yeah, so, but there's nothing else. Okay, that's all.
Okay, alright. So the superintendent cannot be here this evening. So I will refer, who's doing the CO, oh, RJ.
I got you.
Health insurance report. See, but I'll, please, I can't see anything. Go ahead.
You have to accept this, Jen.
I know.
Good. So the medical report you'll see in front of you has our first three months, July, August and September. It may look a little misguided because of the negative number in the end of August. And it's only because of the timing of our monthly contribution. We made two payments in July. We'll see the mostly activity, the income is mostly in July rather than August, making August a skewed number. But the three-month total is on average with prior years, so.
I was going to say, well, it actually looked like the claims were higher, but is that why? Because of the way the payment schedule went?
Yeah.
Okay.
The three-month average, that quarterly average is on par with prior years, so I'm comfortable with the numbers. It's just I don't, the placement of the monthly figures is what I wanted to explain.
So we're on target?
So far, so good.
Okay.
Very early, though.
Very early.
Very early.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, RJ.
Okay, alright. So that will bring me to the assistant superintendent. I was asked a question this weekend and it made me think that maybe, you know, other parents might be curious and have some difficulty navigating the site. So I asked Jen if she could do just a very quick overview of how to, if every parent could access each child's curriculum almost day by day by using the, the new Atlas program.
Okay, so I'm going to go back and just quickly. So before, while I do that, I will make sure that I give a brief assistant superintendent's report and congratulate the lovely and talented East Haven High School marching band who won in their division twice. Fortunately, I was able to see a wonderful performance. Yes, it is. With a score of 73.7 at the Norwich Free Academy Band Event and a score of 73.9 at this past weekend's Vernon Rockville Battle Band Festival. So we continue to see wonderful news from the East Haven High School marching band, so congratulations to them. I'll also report on Constitution Day, which was the 18th of September. And every year, we put together an overview of some of the Constitution Day activities, which will be linked in the assistant superintendent's report for those who are looking online later and want to read a longer document. And finally, earlier today, I did hold a curriculum workshop around the Smarter Balanced Assessments results and the early beginning of the year benchmark results. But I do recommend that parents check their mailbox. You should be receiving reports from your children's schools with an outline of your child's Smarter Balanced scores in the coming days. And we are happy to help you review them. There are website, there are videos on our website in English and Spanish to help. And those are also linked in the letter that should be sent home. And so Michelle asked me today to talk a little bit about, and I'm just going to turn on the Apple TV again, how if you are trying to get on to our Atlas public site, how you would find out what your child is learning. So our teachers have access to a curriculum management system called Atlas. Atlas Curriculum Management System. And so Atlas is how we navigate, so to speak. Here we go. So you would, if you were a parent and you wanted to find out how to get access to your child's curriculum to see what's going on in the classes, you would go to our district website right here, East Haven Public Schools. And then the teaching and learning page should be able to bring you to family resources. You can find out more about the Smarter Balanced, as I was just stating. So there's information here with some parent guides. And we do have, you can go to the Atlas, sorry, teaching and learning website. You can go to the.
No, it was up top.
It was up top?
Yeah.
Family Resources page. Here it is, okay. Right, so just click right on the family resources page and it says the Atlas Curriculum Public Site. So you would click right here on easthaven.k12-public-rubiconatlas.org. And so you would click here. And then the password is yellowjackets with a capital Y, one word. And so you would put in your password, click login. It brings you to this lovely little overview message. And now what do we do? We want to look at, click on where it says all curriculum and we can browse. So let's say my child is a third grader and I want to browse all third grade curriculum. And I want to see what's going on in mathematics in grade three. So I can see the units of study and I can click on a unit and I can find out what they're doing. And so it gives you the overview, some of the essential questions. It does give you the state, standards and learning expectations. And it also, so we do provide this view. Our teachers have a much more extensive view, so I put this little caveat on the bottom. It's helpful to see key components, but you can't find the tests and you can't find the assessments that we're using. But we do have our secure access for our teachers. So this gives you, you know, if you had a question about, you know, what our teachers were doing, you can search all curriculum or you could search course descriptions only. If you just wanted like an overview of that grade three curriculum. And it would give you sort of, each component should have like the bulleted units of like what's the titles of the units that our students are learning. And then there should be some language about how families can help their children at home. And then how it's sort of structured or maybe some of the books that we use. And so I have a lot of families like, "I'm worried that you're teaching this or are you teaching that?" You can look it up. It's all by keyword. You can, you can search it. If you have any concerns, please reach out. I've been very fortunate. I've been very fortunate to have a lot of family members that are happy to collaborate and ask questions about their curriculum, and I find that that creates a good partnership. And so, hopefully, this is helpful for you. There may be, if we're in development of a unit or something, you may be missing... There may be something is not, as we're drafting, it might be hidden from public view, but we're happy to share a draft form of something if there's something that you are interested in looking for. So, just contact our office. But pretty much, everything is ready to go.
It's pretty thorough. I went through, and I was checking out, and you could go into all the different little domains within math in third grade and see exactly what's being taught, and they give you ideas and questions to ask your child to see, you know, how they're doing, what they thought of. It's just, I think it's a great tool. It really, really is.
It is, and it gives you like our, like, it gives you the calendar, so if like you're the kind of person like me who drags their kids to museums all the time, you'll be like, "Oh, we're talking about citizenship. Maybe we'll go to the old statehouse during April vacation," because, you know, my poor children. But, um, but that's, that's sort of the idea. You get a sense of the map of the year. And so, if you're, you know, trimester by trimester, for those trimesters or quarters are in the green bars that you can see. So, you can kind of see a calendar, or you can see the course description in that way that gives you sort of the units, just depending on how you like to look at it. So, it goes right to the Teaching and Learning website, and if you want to link it right to the district website, Melissa may be able to do that, but certainly, there's some good stuff on here. We try to put some stuff in. If there's other items that you find would be helpful for your family, we will be publishing at our next Curriculum Advisory Council, which I have currently scheduled for 4:00 PM on the 26th. Does that conflict with any committee, subcommittee meetings?
No, because we probably wouldn't be meeting until 6:00.
Right.
So, we generally meet, we'll be sharing our Family Partnership Learning Guides that really congeal some of this, which can be sent via email or some more, so parents can see them. And that's it. That's how to get there.
Okay. Thank you, Jen.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah.
My little question is, so every teacher pretty much is on task in each grade level or on target around teaching the same materials or...
Yeah, well, our Atlas gives us our pacing, so when we report grades on the elementary report card in trimester one, that those reportings are commensurate with both our assessment framework, which is the benchmark assessments, the curriculum-based measures, the observational things we're looking for, we're expecting, you know, our curriculum is supposed to match what we want kids to know at the end, and that reporting data, the revised elementary report card, which was shared in last April, and should be going out in the first round of report cards this year for elementary students. You know, you should really be able to see the through line, like connect all the dots in all those areas, so yes. That was a, hopefully, an answer to your question, Tia. Did you get...
You know, it's nice if everybody throughout the district was, you know, on target, on, you know, with the curriculum and moving, you know, things happen, but you know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I think what the assessment calendar does, it gives us goalposts. So, we may be a day or two off, but we sort of say, "Wow, I can't really deviate too much," because... But there's some wiggle room for students to take some pre-assessments and say, "I really mastered this quickly, so I'm going to do some supplemental if there's an area that was less." So, there, there's some, it's a course to be run for teachers, and they all have access to the platform. And if they don't, there's a Google form that they can use to contact our office.
I think it's going to make a big difference. It is.
Sounds great.
We won't see it for a few years, exactly, but it really will, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Anybody else have any questions?
No, not regarding that, thank you.
All right. Other than that, then we will move to number four, Approval of Meeting Minutes for Regular Meeting on September 28th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the October, what'd you say?
September.
September 28th.
Twenty-eight.
I could have said October. I don't know, Jen. I don't know.
September 28th, 2021. Second.
Any questions, comments? If not, I will ask for an aye vote. All in favor to approve the meeting minutes from September 28th, 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. That brings us to our audience of citizens portion of this evening. Melissa, do we have anyone waiting to join with us?
No.
You do not. All right. Would anyone here like to speak? Okay. All right. We will move on to new business. 6.1, Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of Purchase Orders Over 7,000. Do I have a motion, or does anybody have any clarifying questions?
No clarifying. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase orders over 7,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. They could find it out later to see who it is.
It's quite rare.
All right, so at this time, I will ask if anyone has any further questions. If not, I'll ask for an aye vote for the approval of purchase orders over 7,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. All in favor. 6.2, Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of Invoices for Fiscal Year 2020-2021 in the Amount of $2,044.20. So, we are wrapping it up.
We're getting there.
All right.
Slow and steady.
Okay, does anyone have any clarifier questions? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
The motion to accept the invoices, approve the invoices, 2020-2021, $2,000 for $2,044.20.
Second.
Okay, so there's no questions or comments. I will ask for an aye vote. All in favor to approve invoices for fiscal year 2020-2021 in the Amount of $2,044.20, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, staying, motion carries. 6.3, Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of Invoices for Fiscal Year 2021-2022 in the Amount of $258,204.85. Does anyone have any clarifying questions? And if not, I will ask for a motion at this time.
Make a motion to approve the invoice for fiscal year 2021-2022, the Amount of $258,204.85.
Second.
Okay, questions, comments? If not, I will ask for an aye vote. All in favor to approve invoices for fiscal year 2021-2022 in the Amount of $258,204.85, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. All in favor. 6.4, Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of Vision to Learn, MOU, and I believe Ms. Church is here this evening to give us a little background.
So, East Haven Public Schools has the opportunity to partner with Vision to Learn. Vision to Learn is a nonprofit that joins together school districts with foundations to support... Our foundation would be the Dalio Foundation, and they match their funds. So, the Connecticut State Department of Ed actually sent out this information stating that American Academic Recovery and our ESR funding could be used towards screening students, the K-12 continuum. We met with Mr. Swan, myself, Vision to Learn, and found out more about it. Our financial contribution to this would not, would be 50% of the total, which would not exceed $28,000. They estimate the high end to be $56,000, and again, it would be matched funds of 50%. What they do is they come in with a mobile vision unit. They screen every child, which is in alignment with what we have to do for the state of Connecticut anyway.
Julie just asked, the MOU does say K through eight, so...
Oh, right, so, and yeah, so we decided on K through eight, so that's why it will go down some. If we had gone with K-12 and thinking about that, nine through 12th grade students usually have identified the need for glasses by then. We feel it's really important this year because so many individuals have not been taken to doctors regularly. We do do the screening generally with, at three grade levels, in alignment with the state requirements, and I can tell you just from being a classroom teacher that we would have students who failed the vision screening, and we would reach out to families, and not every family was able to get to a doctor, an eye doctor, and obtain glasses for their child.
And this would cover the cost of the glasses, too.
So, this, it covers the cost of any student who needs an eye exam, and they estimate about 28% of students would need an eye exam. And so, that may be up to 560 students, and they multiply that times $100. So, they would get the eye exam. They provide the glasses with higher-quality frames because they guarantee them for a year, so they don't want to be replacing them. So, it truly is a win-win, and the reason that it falls into academic recovery, and I can share the most recent research, is that students who put on glasses, that were in need of glasses, tend, you know, have shown to three to six months' worth of progress just because now they can see and they're able to read. So, that's how it falls, yeah. How it falls under... And this would not be a yearly thing. Vision to Learn states that they like to come out like every three to four years out to districts. They're in four... They've helped 305,000 kids receive glasses. They're in like 40 different communities across the entire United States, so.
Especially at a very young age, they might even realize that it's a vision issue.
Right, and they asked if we can, you know, like, when we were talking about this and sharing it and discussing it, Pre-K had asked, like, well, do they offer that for Pre-K, but they don't at that point because they're not ready to...
Yeah.
To respond to the questions needed in the screening. You know, you would need something more specialized for that. So, our plan is to, with the approval of the MOU, to start at Momogwin and Tuttle and then move through all kindergarten through grade eight.
Starting what?
Um, starting at the end of the month.
Oh.
I think they're able to, they can screen more students per day, but when they actually do the eye exams, it's about 20 students per day that they're able to get through, so it takes, it takes a while, so.
I think this is...
I have a silly question, right?
Why is this called an MOU? Uh, because it's a memorandum of understanding between...
Between what, though?
East Haven Board of Ed and Vision to Learn, because you're, it's a joint...
Promising services, I mean.
Right. They're providing services, and we're agreeing to...
Basically, a contract.
Yeah.
Well, I just always thought the MOU was to be added to a contract that was already established.
And I'm not, and I honestly, they, it's something that they provided us, this memorandum of understanding to go into with them, that we had to, you know, go back and forth on a few things to change, but...
Yeah, it was sent to us.
I just, I didn't see it yet.
Here, it's only a couple pages.
I have a question.
They are fully insured and liability and all that, yes, Jack.
What's the difference between what we're screening the kids for now?
So, right now, we have, we only do it at three, three different grade levels, and they do an eye chart with the nurse. So, they actually cover one eye, do the E. What they bring out is...
But there was a more in-depth thing...
From, from the Knights, or someone brought it in. I don't know what...
It was when my son was in...
The Lions Club, thank you. The Lions Club brought it.
Like, two years ago.
Mm-hmm. So, the Lions Club brought that to us?
Okay.
But with that, it did not come glasses or the follow-up actual eye exam. Full-fledged eye exam by a doctor that would write the prescription.
Okay.
So, those, that, that would be the difference.
So, but, so we have to use ESR funds and academic recovery?
We could, yes.
We could. And so, do we have the funds like to make sure we can do this?
I don't, a lot of people don't realize that it's little factors like this that really do factor into that achievement gap because there's just children that are from, you know, in certain demographics that just don't get identified, of having just something as simple as a vision issue, which will then, of course, factor into their confidence and their, you know, their reading ability and all their academic performance going forward, and it's like, it kind of spirals, and it's just to do something as simple as this could mean a big difference. It's like, I, I'm excited.
So, Julie, so final cost based on the number of students that are screened?
So, that is with 560 students needing eye exams, they ask for locking in an amount that's equivalent to 28% of your population. So, we took the population from kindergarten through grade eight, got the percentage to find out, and that's how, if we did the whole student body, it would be 900 students. We did K-8, it would be 560 students. It does not mean it will be the full 28. It depends on the amount of students. That's the maximum.
Because I noticed there's a, there's an opt-out consent form, right?
Yep, and we are required to send that opt-out consent form to families before, which will happen.
I think this is actually like a fantastic...
A win-win.
...opportunity for our district. I'm obviously a huge advocate for any of the vision aspects for it. My son's legally blind, and it wasn't found out until he was five, almost six years old, so an eye exam, even though he had eye exams, an extensive eye exam and going through that, it's a huge component of our learning, and I think we're very fortunate for this opportunity, so thanks for bringing this forward.
Yeah, especially for people who don't have insurance.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, I think it's a, it's...
And they are, they're also in Connecticut. They're working with Vernon, Manchester, East Hartford, and Hartford at the time of our planning conversation, which was well over a month ago, so they may actually have additional districts now.
Once, if this MOU is approved, when would this roll out for our district?
Uh, we hope to start...
End of the month, right?
The end of the month, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
With two, the first two schools.
I don't have any further questions. Anyone else?
No.
No.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, if there's no further question, I will ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Vision to Learn MOU.
Second.
You guys have such...
Jen, I was right there together.
Timing. All right. So, if there's no further questions, I will ask for an aye vote to approve the Vision to Learn MOU. All in favor to approve the Vision to Learn MOU, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, staying. All in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Discussion and Possible Action on the Approval of the Assistant Teacher Contracts.
Two of them, correct.
Mm-hmm. Does anybody have any clarifying questions? Other, well, other than that.
No. Sorry.
Yes, yes, yes. My same question. I finally got it. 12-month employee is expected to report to school during inclement weather. Why are we expecting assistant teachers to come to school when the school's closed?
If they're 12-month employees?
An assistant teacher, isn't that just, no, it's a 262, 260 to 262-day job.
Well, you should ask the board of ed member who's not here again.
That's a 12-month employee.
That is a 12-month position. Three, because you minus out the weekends. So, 260 to two days is actually every day of the year.
So, this is, this is overbooked, so there's no kids there, but they utilize that day.
It's a full-year program.
And there are kids there.
It's a full-year program.
It's preschool.
Yeah.
But we're saying during inclement weather, you're having this individual report to a school where there's no students, and they're not even the teacher. They're an assistant.
Well, the building only closes if there is a state of an emergency, because this is a...
I know, but I don't understand what these people are going to do when they're there. What are they doing? Why are we making people drive through inclement weather to get to someplace where there's nobody there? The teacher's not there.
Okay, but, so if you didn't do that...
Well, the teacher's expected to be there.
The teacher is there.
It's in her contract.
It's in her contract, too.
Overbook is all 12 months.
I thought for 20 years, when a school closed, I didn't go to school.
Is the preschool open if there's no school?
The preschool would be open to, not to the students if it's, if it's closed, but we do have, we have their people report, because they use that opportunity to clean, to plan, to, because they're a full-year program, so there's not a lot of days where they have the opportunity to take that chance.
They also use that opportunity on their own cognitive if they don't want to come to work.
Correct. There is the option in there that they can take the day if they want to.
Because otherwise, we'd be paying for hours not worked, and no one's going to be saying, "Oh, by the way, it snows, so we're just going to take about 25 bucks from your pay." about 25 bucks from your pay this week, you know?
Either way, you're not putting them in harm's way, because they have the option to take it if they needed that. Otherwise, you're paying them to not come to work, and that would be also a problem.
Yeah.
Right?
Uh-uh.
I know it's hard to get-
We, we get it. We get it. It wasn't-
We do get it.
We, trust me, we get it. We're just-
Jack, I drive to work in the snow also. I'm just saying.
But there are people who, sometimes staff members have to report to work.
Yes.
Sometimes staff have to go to work.
I do.
On, 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 yeah, see? They have to come to work. Excuse me?
Yeah, I think everybody's contract's gotta have a payment. Every twelve-month employee's in there-
Has that contract.
If ever, you better be there.
Always. Seven days.
All right. I think, I think, yeah, okay. All right. So if there's no, if there's any further questions, otherwise I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to accept the approval of the assistant teacher contracts. Second.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I agree with Jack, though. We have, yes, understood.
Yeah.
Nothing further.
All right. So at this time, I will ask for an aye vote. All in favor to approve the assistant teacher contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Stained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. So discussion and possible action on the approval of the out-of-state field trip request. This is for our eighth graders to go to Boston in May. I did want to ask that the board consider possibly, because the cost is, I think, something that might be somewhat excessive to possibly cover the transportation for the field trips. Um, RJ is gonna look to see where we could find funding, um, but-
For that specific trip.
For that specific trip, just for the busing, just for the transportation, to possibly offset the cost a bit.
RJ, with that being said, because this is an eighth-grade trip, this is just the eighth grade at the academy, correct? So this is, you know, JMMs will be here our next meeting for the exact same thing. Are you looking for funds for that eighth grade as well?
We will be.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah. No, we already anticipated that, of course.
Well, I just wanted to be sure that if it's gonna be something that we, we can make affordable for the eighth-grade academy, that we'd do so for the eighth grade at JMMs, okay?
Yeah, I don't think we would.
I, I can't- I know, but I just wanted to be sure.
We're really gonna get this trip approved by the state, that we can leave the state and go on a bus in May?
There's no-
There's no travel restrictions.
There's no travel restrictions or anything in the way, and in, in, in the event, if there is-
Then it changes, yeah.
Correct.
Well, right now, there's no travel restrictions.
Well, as, as a person who does this, at my, I'm telling you that if-
Well, we didn't put this forward. This came from the teacher who teaches this specific class, who's putting this forward, requesting this.
But, but it's, it's, it's like an eighth-grade planned event, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, you've known it. You've planned it.
I'm, I do, and I'm not this year. So I just think we need to, um, really think about that, and, and, I don't know.
I think this is a huge part of eighth grade, and I think that they've missed out on a lot of opportunities. And if at this point, we're able to do this for them, then I think safely, and they're using additional-
I don't know that we are. I'm not convinced we are.
They're using, right, but we're looking at using additional buses, so that there are social distancing available as it stays in here.
You can't leave without having a coach bus. You're talking a lot of money particularly-
This is coach buses. It's written in the memorandum here.
Right. So you're gonna take more coach buses?
No, no, no.
No.
No, 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 no. We're, we're still talking about that specifically, so that's not going into, to anything. We're just covering their transportation.
Just a question.
U.S. coachways.
What's, what's the departure time? There's no departure.
Yeah, I, I know, I know.
Well, then we can't do anything if it's not written on here correctly.
We're covering the transportation. We're, we're gonna be, again, discussing the specifics. We know it has to be coach buses. We definitely get that.
But that's not correct, then. You can't approve something that's not correct. You can only approve the trip, to take the trip outside of, anyway, can I just look at that?
So what are the, the social distancing rules for them?
On buses, on school buses.
School buses, students are sitting next to each other.
If, if I may make a comment, so our office generally approves all field trips, but I do not sign them with approval prior to the board if it is an out-of-state trip. So our policy states that is it. But all of those safety procedures are outlined in the policy. Those are things, we collect data. I would require additional documentation prior to the trip going forward. It is not necess, it's more of at the board's discretion whether or not you are inclined to allow an out-of-state trip. Um, and certainly if you're inclined to purchase additional, you know, support for the transportation. Um, so I, our office does follow up with additional, like, we get the roster, and we get the safety plan, and we get a lot of that with the, with the triplicate copy and, but, you know, that's, I just want to make sure for your knowledge that those are components.
Yeah, this was just to approve the trip. Correct. I thought it would be nice if the board covered the transportation due to, yes, the past two years, these students have not got to do much. This is their eighth-grade trip.
Okay, but I'm all for that. I, I'm all for that. I get it. I, I, I feel it, too. But I just feel that, I don't know what the situation's gonna be, and if you can't get your money back, if it's a deposit situation, they're asking for two buses for a certain amount of kids, that, that hold probably 80 kids. One bus holds like 80, 70, 50 to 80 kids.
If they need two buses, depending on actual social distancing guidelines. There's only 36 children going. Do I think they need two buses that hold 70 people? I do not.
Usually the bus capacity is like 60, right? Is that right? Give or take 50 something.
That's my point. This could become, become an outrageous amount that you were, we, we need to put a set amount on. I, I would love to cover the cost. We, we're just convinced that we have it. I think you need to think about that.
If you do a set amount, it's gonna be very difficult to be equitable with JMMs with 200 students versus 36.
Okay. So at this point, can we put forward the trip at just that? And then RJ, can you get us the information that we need, so in the possibility on our next meeting on the 26th, we can have the information for the financial component? So that way, that's a possibility? So we can have the accurate information at that point?
I'd like to know what the $150?
That's what the students are gonna have to pay.
Yeah, and that's gonna cover admissions?
And the buses.
What about food?
Uh-
Generally, students bring some spending money, and our boxed lunches, our, Sedexa will allow, will pack box lunches for the students.
It's included, right?
It's part of our-
Free lunch.
Yeah.
They actually have grab-and-go breakfasts and lunches that come on the bus with them.
And personally, I just saw our family seeing the price of $150. I wouldn't want any, anyone to feel that they could not go.
I, I totally agree with that.
So why don't we just approve the trip and then leave the, put into the cost for another time? Right. So that-
I'm all for that, but I also want to approve the trip, and in the event that, if it can't happen, you, we have to make sure you get your deposit back. If you, you, I'm not kidding you, you could be out $20,000.
So our process, when we put through the PO, we can make sure we have a good look at the, you know, that's part of our financial processes as well, just looking at the contract and when the PO has put in. Christina Torre will look at any caveats in that contract.
It's not, it would be 20, it's a thousand. I think it was, was it already given?
The deposit was already given.
The deposit was already given, so.
To get this here-
What if we said no? What if we said no?
Then you would go back to the bus company, but they, they wanted some form of monetary down payment when they, to get the trip to you tonight.
How much is a bus? One bus?
Well, we're not, RJ's gonna get us all the information.
I know. I'm just saying, this, 150 times 36 is 5,400.
It's not 36, it's 36 students involved, plus five chaperones, plus two pairs.
And so they have to cover the cost of those people, too.
But it says expense to students, doesn't say anything about expense to pairs or teachers.
There is no expense to pairs. That's part of their day, their, their job.
We were, that's why I said it just made it easier to just cover the cost of the bus rental. It was just a clean way to do it.
According to the teacher, yes.
Okay.
And it really doesn't matter how many buses, because even when we do it for JMMs, they're gonna have five buses. Either way, it's equitable. We're covering the cost of transportation.
Well, that's why I asked, that as long as this is something that we can do across the board, eighth grade as a district, the thing. So please, if we can just have that information and things, so we can move forward with what's actually on the agenda tonight, which is just the trip, nothing financial.
And as long as it's approved by the, the state says we can-
Yeah. If that's what you guys want to do, that's what we'll do.
That's what I think.
All right.
As soon as I can.
So I make a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for the East Haven Academy eighth grade.
Second.
Second?
Yep.
All right. Any questions or comments?
So we can't say that they, as long as it's still approved by the state? According to the, yes, thank you. That's all I'm saying. I think that's- Is that fair?
A district policy?
Yeah. I, I, that is absolutely, as long as it's in accordance to state guidelines, okay? State travel guidelines.
That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
All right. So if there's no other questions or comments, I will ask for an aye vote to approve the out-of-state field trip request from the East Haven Academy to Boston, Massachusetts, as long as it adheres to the state of Connecticut's travel guidelines during the pandemic. How's that one? All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. That brings us to six point seven, discussion and possible action on the approval of hires, rehires, and stipends.
Which we just received an updated list.
Make a motion to approve the hires, rehires, and stipends, as stated.
Second.
If not, then I will ask for an aye vote to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends. All in favor to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. All right. So for future agenda items, we are gonna cover the, the cost. Um, we will look at the, covering the cost for the field trip. I believe, anything else off the top of anyone's head that we're, that I should be adding in? Just, you could email me, just in case anyone had thought now, so they didn't forget. Um, other than that, our next meeting is October 26th at 7:00 PM, and we will have a policy subcommittee. I don't know if we need the full hour or the-
Well, there's a workshop, right?
Half hour.
There's a workshop at 4:00.
Workshops at 4:00 for curriculum. That's like a standard quarterly workshop.
I think, yeah, I think I agree that we'll take the hour, because there may be some going back and forth questions, and, you know, that way we'll-
Yeah. All right. 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM workshop.
Yes.
And I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.